Call this meeting the Harztown Council's order at 7:03. Roll call, George Knoll.
Eric Capart.
Sean Harley.
Angela Rissin.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Simone.
But to record show Randy Steed is...
Oh, he's way.
Plaid allegiance.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from 8:17, 2022. Motion to approve minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes a second.
Motion a second to approve minutes from 8:17, 2022. All those there say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passed. I want to change things up just a little bit here. Is Ms. Walls here for MCEC? I think we'll hear from you before we move into citizens' input, so.
Well, thank you. I wasn't trying to hide from you in the court. I didn't think you were about that. I was just so happy that I didn't pull a Randy this time.
He will, there's no reason.
We won't let him run.
Thank you so much. You? Well, I was at the commissioners' meeting yesterday and just kind of given a third quarter update on what's going on at the MCEC. What I didn't share there and I haven't shared with the other towns that I've been to already is that the industrial property that we have on LoopNet here in Argus is generating a lot of leads for us. I counted up that we've had 150 contacts since July 1 on the ITAMGO property. And I didn't have enough time to count it going back to January 1. Now, I will say that it's slowed down a little bit. We are seeing a little bit of a decrease in leads, probably a lot to do with the pre-leading conversation, inflation, supply chain. Companies really just aren't comfortable spending money right now and so many things are uncertain, but we still are seeing significant interest in it. And I looked at our weekly report, we have it on LoopNet, which has been a fantastic source of leads for us. And it came up in 112 searches and there were 50, about 50, like 52 virtual tours of the facility. So it's getting looked at quite a bit more than what we're, for people that haven't reached out to us. So we're excited about that. One of the things I know I've shared before was our hope for a ready project for the MCEC was to do a revolving loan fund so that we could get more manufacturing centers or shell buildings put up. Because of the restrictions with the federal ARPA funds, our project wasn't eligible for ready this round. Now, there is talk that we have Ready 2.0 coming before the legislature at the beginning of the year. And that would use state funds to fund, so that'll give the state a little bit more flexibility with the funds. So we will continue to pursue that. But in the meantime, we're starting to look at where are we going to put manufacturing centers number four and five. And Mark and I have very, very vague, very basic conversations about it, but it is something that we're considering also. We've been, in a perfect world, we would do it in a town that hasn't already had a manufacturing center, but the town also has to be able to support the project. So just putting out there that we are looking to get the four and five up and building in '23, break ground. Let's see, slide four, we have a couple of construction projects that are underway that we've been working with. Pitco is building a new facility in Plymouth to be leased to Plymouth Molding Group. They're expanding and they're adding jobs at that project, adding some new equipment that has already got through an abatement. And Renewal by Anderson, which will be close to 100 jobs and good paying jobs. That one's under construction, that's the photo on the right. So we're excited, those projects are going forward. Labor data, most recent June, you can see that the Marshall County unemployment rate below the national average, below the state average. And there were only 22 counties in Indiana that had a higher unemployment rate than us. But one of the things that really sticks out in our region is there are 25,000 jobs today unfilled in manufacturing and in the healthcare sectors.
Is that a re, excuse me, is that a region?
It's a region, yeah.
Okay, not just county.
Yeah, so in our region, region two. But that is a lot of jobs and which leads to one of, the two of the projects that we, the MCEC threw all of our support behind at the county level, countywide projects, was a new nursing sim lab at Ancilla College and a career innovation center for technical training, job training for high school students and through adult education. So we can get folks, start getting kids introduced to manufacturing jobs and manufacturing. And we keep saying manufacturing jobs are not like our fathers' manufacturing jobs, you know, they're cleaner, they're more high-tech. So let's get them in there, start getting those skills developed. And they're also looking to expand their healthcare services. And we'll have the space to do that at the career innovation center. And this would be open to all five school districts. The lifelong learning network was the formal applicant to the project. They have their first full-time director now. But it'll be, so it'll impact Argus kids, Triton, Jeremy Riffold, the superintendent, Triton is the chair of that board. So there's definitely a countywide emphasis on that project. And Ancilla with the nursing sim lab, Ancilla's biggest scholarship now that they're affiliated with Marion is if you get your associate's degree in nursing at Ancilla, you can then transfer to Marion and get bachelor's degree and the tuition is the same as if you were still at Ancilla. So it's a huge discount. And the numbers, when you listen to their chancellor height, the numbers at Ancilla, like 75% of their students are from within an hour. They are a lot of first-generation college students, a lot of rural kids that live at home and drive to Ancilla. And the numbers say that if you go to school, if you go to college in your backyard, you tend to get a job in your backyard when you graduate from college. So this is where we can keep our kids staying here and not fleeing the nest after college. So we're really excited about that. We think that there's a lot of support with Ready, we're really hopeful that we'll get funding on that. There were 157 projects submitted last month for Ready. For just the first round, these were just capital, brick-and-mortar projects. $157 million, the county or the region only received $50 million. And so they're going to have a lot of tough decisions to make. And they still, and they have another funding round coming through this month for programming. So it's going to be very competitive. So every ready dollar we get in our community will be appreciated. We're also working on trying to find some more greenfield sites in the county. You guys have some, you guys, your 20-acre site is our best greenfield site in the county. We're working with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation and our utility partners to find some other potential greenfield sites. You know, if there's a, I don't think that we'll be able to do a mega site, but we do have some, we do have some rail-served, some rail-served parcels that could be of good potential. And of course, as soon as gas prices go up, the interest in rail-served properties goes up as well. So we're just in the beginning stages of working with a consultant that the state has engaged in. But be prepared to hear from me, probably within the next month, the process is, once this consultant out of Atlanta does a 30-foot view of the county and where they identify where they think that there could be some good and greenfield sites. And then they meet with, they'll meet with utilities, town officials, MCEC staff. And we'll, Jamie in the room, and we'll all look and mark, and we'll look and see, okay, so here are all the properties that they found. Well, that one doesn't work because it doesn't have good road access. Or that one doesn't work because we could, you know, the property owner would never sell or, you know, whatever. So then we can start eliminating and then identify a short list that we can go and pursue. So we're looking forward to getting that started. John, I'm surprised John's not here, but John Vander Wheel, your appointment to the board, he's doing a fantastic job. He's a great resource for us and, you know, I don't know, I don't know that he can find someone that has more enthusiasm for Argus. And he brings that to our board meetings, which is great. So we appreciate you putting him on the board. We really are enjoying working with him. And Mark is fantastic to work with too, and Jamie, and they'll get questions from me, like, hey, I've got a lead, it needs this much power, can you make it happen? And I don't know that Mark can say no, so, which...
Yes, we know.
I need the word no for.
Yeah, no, no. So I just, you know, just to go through the motions, I'll throw the question out there knowing the answer in advance, but, you know. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have one thing, it's kind of, it's an itch in my brain and it's dragging me nuts. Is there anything that, from the economic side of, you know, county chair of that division, is there any way you can help pile on the state to help modernize this intersection out here with us? I'm tired of our residents getting killed. I'm tired of it. And they just keep dragging their feet and dragging their feet and it's just ridiculous. And I don't know, I'm drawing a straw, is there somebody with any kind of clout that can help put the pressure on them to get that started?
So I have just become active with the 31 Coalition and they had a meeting August 18th. And that was my first meeting that I attended. And I'm trying to find, my impression is that this is the, the can's getting kicked down the road and it's going to be for the next administration. With that said, the first candidate to announce his run for governor is Eric Doten, who's from the Fort Wayne area. He used to be the Secretary of Commerce under the Pence administration. He was in Marshall County last week. His campaign manager, his campaign lead is Eric Long. And Eric is the son of David Long, who used to be at the State House, now he's a consultant and lobbyist for the US-30 and US-31 Coalition. I gave him the entire spiel. And so Eric already had gotten it from his dad, never hurts to reinforce it. So I know one, I know the first governor candidate, it's on his radar, it's something that he really cares about. I just think we're going to have to unfortunately get through the next couple of years and before anything can be done. And that upsets me as well. Because I think I've shared with you guys, I get gas, or I used to get gas quite a bit at 10. It's just a really good stop for me and it's, but I had a close call, someone, I was getting on Old Michigan Road when I was coming here, I was coming from Plymouth, and I was in the median and some car got next to me in the median and went in front of a semi. Now, I knew that there was no one behind the semi, I didn't know, people go so fast, like, I'm not going to risk it. I was going to wait five more seconds and a car came, I didn't understand it. So there's so many problems all around, people go too fast on 31, people are too aggressive with the turning on, yeah, that's an issue.
Well, just to reiterate, what really makes me mad is, I don't know, a couple or three years ago, Governor Holcomb came out and said, what Jenner said, and he wanted them to move to a priority, and we still are waiting for any kind of progress at all. That was the governor stating to move ahead with it. And we are still waiting. So I just want that to be on the record, Governor Holcomb has failed terribly in that aspect.
I appreciate that. I think when they moved the intersection, I mean, they had already engaged the Troyer group, you know, Mark and I, we had a meeting like pretty early on as I started, where you showed me all the different intersection designs that the Troyer group had started, surveying work was done. And then they kicked it down and they made it a part of the PELT study, which there's a huge difference in the progress on 30 and 31. I don't understand why you would combine them, they...
Makes no sense.
No, I...
And I agree with you, it's kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, so they did.
And it's just... They've reached the most... Exactly right.
They just opened their RFP again. We, you have one, I have one, engineer contact us. So first thing we did, we started over, just so you know. Troyer no longer does any engineering like that, so they will not be the engineering firm. So they'll select that again. Your program year is 2028, that's what it got pushed back to. Even if they started today, I know you want that moved up, but even if everything was started today, it's still going to take roughly that long to get it all done. Because they haven't done environmental studies, they have not, I mean, you have preliminary engineers, about all you have.
Well, that's my point, Mark, is three years ago, when Governor Holcomb come out publicly stated that, you know, and told DOT to get on it. And they started and they pulled back. Somewhere down the state, the Indians aren't following the chief.
End dot blamed the governor, the governor's office blamed End dot, and it became a...
But I will tell you, Sean, the good thing that is coming out of this is that these engineering firms that are going to submit these proposals are actually coming here and asking us what we want. Not just taking like Troyer did and designed their own study and did their own thing. These engineering firms are actually coming down here, meeting with Mark. I got one at 4 o'clock the other day, but he's coming back to meet with Mark. And, you know, John G. was very instrumental in getting that, what we actually wanted on paper. And so he knows what it is, we've all sat through it, you know, we had the presentation. And so we're presenting that to these people and telling them what kind of growth we expect to see in Argus in the next few years. And they're taking that into consideration. The only thing they're not taking into consideration is getting rid of all these roundabouts they want to put everywhere, so, you know.
You know, that's, it's good to hear on that side of it, positive note, but a project that should have been started by today, this time. Now we have to wait till 2028 possibly, before anything starts to hit. In the meantime, we keep having...
2025.
Getting killed, however you make it, on that road, it's just terrible. And it's not just the road, there are, I agree with you, there are people that aren't patient enough.
And it slows down our economic growth for Argus.
Tremendous.
Because we can't, we cannot say what we, you know, the people that own the land along the highway can't sell it because they don't know what's going to happen with their intersection. So I understand your frustration, we've all been through it. But at least these engineering firms are coming to us and not designing what they think is best.
And it's being pushed behind the scenes. Kevin Overmeyer is the chair of the US-31 Coalition and he keeps it at the forefront of the coalition. And I know he has conversations with Endot and he's the one that, I was involved with the 30 Coalition and he's the one who's like, you know, like, why aren't you at the 31? We need you at the table. And I'm, okay, I didn't, you know, we just gave them a check every year, that was, I didn't know that they were really active still. It was my impression that they weren't, but they're recommitting to everything and eased the chair, so, yeah. So it's being pushed behind the scenes, but yeah, but it's still frustrating.
There are so many things tied into that project. Aside from safety, you know, on the economic development side and the planning and the future of, you know, the town's direction of doing things. And it just has been very frustrating, at least for me, I've just, I'm about fed up with it, so.
Come out there and agree, Kevin, out of the car, you think it's...
Yeah, I understand, George, and I don't know that I'd want that job.
But you also have to plan it through.
I understand.
Because, I mean, they, just like our first meeting that we've been through, they're inputting a change in 110 or a change in 10. They first shut there, shut down every road in between. Ooh. So I mean, you have to kind of try to, you know, you have to look at EMS response times, you have to look at fire response times, trying to, all the states have to look at this, that's all they care about.
Well, you also have to put into consideration the ag community, because I also saw on my way here tonight, a big tractor with a, with hay trying to cross 31.
Yeah, and the original proposal that we, as a town, sent out to the county and the county adopted it, that, we had the ag community, we had everybody planned in that, it was, it's a good plan. But it's just...
It wasn't theirs.
Yeah, it wasn't their plan, that's what, we outsmarted them, that's what the deal was, so. Thank you, I just wanted to vent my frustrations a little bit.
I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Do you have a question?
I have a question. Is this more of a, is this more of a, well, this is a political thing or is there something else that could be in here? For instance, I'm just saying, individuals, I'm a new member of the community, so individuals can't get a whole lot done, but maybe as a town, talking through the attorney, the town manager, pressing buttons, and the town, so we feel this way, could let that be known. And if we let that be known enough, obviously this squeaky wheel gets the oil.
We did that, we and more than local.
So I have been told that unofficially, maybe being the squeaky wheel has caused some of these issues. That the town lobbied very hard and apparently didn't follow a chain of command and unwritten rule about how to do it. And that you guys were just advocating for your community and...
Endot got very mad at us.
Yeah, because we were part of their J-turn.
They got very mad at us and the commissioner of Endot got very mad at us and then he kicked our can down the road.
Well, it's, when you have a spade a spade, they get spaded.
Yes, so we fought against the J-turns that they wanted to put into effect and we did a petition, a big petition, and we sent it to just about every political, because I personally sent them out. So we sent it to just about every political person that we could think of. We got the news channels down here and we did interviews on the intersection. We did this squeaky wheel and that's why we ended up in the position that we're in.
Many public open houses.
Many public open houses. We spoke out against Endot at our, every, every public hearing that they had over the J-turns. And they got very mad and then they showed us exactly what they could do.
All the more reason to vote all them crooks out.
So what you're saying is Endot's not being transparent.
Huh?
Endot's not being transparent.
Oh, they're being transparent, they...
What I'm saying is they're not, they're holding all the cards, they're a lot of knowledge, but if they had plans for you guys, they should have told you.
Right.
Well, Endot wants to answer to the governor and obviously they think they're above the governor, that's my thoughts on it.
Well, but you have to have somebody that pushes back, so. And we have and we've tried, you know, we're at the position that we are and now we're doing it, we're trying to do it the right way so that we don't get it kicked further down the road, so.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
But it's not fun.
No, it's not fun. No, and watching people die is not fun, so. Thank you so much for that, we really appreciate it.
No, my...
Thanks for getting Sean started.
It's not my first time, won't be my last.
I just asked for it anyway.
I voted to turn a meeting over for Randy.
Do we have to do that?
No.
No.
Citizens' input now.
Yeah, that's true.
Citizens' input. I called in and I know you guys probably made your call, but they didn't pick up my stuff. They just left it. The large item from back when we did the large...
Really?
Yeah, they didn't mess with it. And the other thing is too, it was, for those of us on that street, it was Monday before they picked us up that week and trash pickup on Wednesday, so what's the point?
I understand.
They're just too big later.
They were, in my defense, I let them know that night with Paul, or the next morning. I was not aware that the whole cap of the, or quadrant of the town had been missed, so I didn't call them personally that morning. And they told me that the soonest they could get a truck out to us would be Saturday. They came Saturday and they picked up maybe three streets and they left the rest. And so we are now, I called back on Monday because I was getting more complaints Monday morning. And they brought, they sent another truck back out that day, but apparently they did not pick up everybody's stuff. And I do apologize for that, but I will tell you, we have a great garbage driver, his name is Kerry, he works for Republic and he knows the town. He was on vacation that week. He deserves a vacation, he was on vacation. So they sent a new, well, they sent a new driver in and he didn't realize that it was large item pickup. And he got, he didn't have enough DOT hours, is what I was told. So that's why he left a quadrant of the town. But he left a lot more than just your quadrant, there were other sections and areas, he was not familiar with the town.
Well, I'm not here to, I get it.
Well, I'm not, and I'm not making excuses, I'm just telling you exactly what happened, so, you know. And I will say something to them, but they're going to tell me the next large item cleanup is in October and I apologize, but I can't make them do...
I mean, I took the time to break everything down because the first time last last spring, I just put the basketball goalpost out there and they picked it up because it's too, and I understand, it's probably too big. So I cut that down, a couple of scrappers come through and grab it, so I cut it down.
Oh, that's good.
But they left the, they left the plastic base.
Oh, yeah.
And I have a 32-ounce plastic trash can, mangol.
Right.
So it's not like, so they're big, but they're definitely manageable, so that, put them out there.
And if you call my office tomorrow morning, if you would please, let me know exactly your address, I can look it up, but I'll probably sleep and forget. So if you could call tomorrow morning. What I can do is if you have that trash can out there and just that one item, I can ask our super-duper good guy that is going to be picking up the trash tomorrow, if he can pick it up, I can't guarantee he can, because he's only going to be driving the truck with the arm. And when they come in with large item, they have the bucket, you know, so, but I can ask, you know, and he might just do it, he's really good about that, so.
So if he doesn't get it this week, then I'll just, it's supposed to be October, I'll drag all that stuff back to my shed again.
I'm sorry. You know, and again, it was just like the perfect storm for that week, but...
Any other citizens' input?
I'm just back here again asking about the replacement of my sidewalk, but from what I hear, that must be a long time to know if there's no cement anywhere. Is that what you said?
There's a shortage of Portland, yes, to make the concrete, yes.
And I know you've been doing streets or somebody has, so maybe there's, you know, it could probably be next summer, but is there a list to be put on?
The streets are actually a contractor that's doing now, that's separate from sidewalks, most sidewalks the town does unless they're in...
Okay, two different people then.
Yeah. Down in South Michigan.
Yeah, I didn't know if you wrote down my address or...
I went down, looked at...
I went down and looked at, I mean, it's a bad shit, but.
And what's your name, I'm sorry? Uh, Gloria Ely, E-L-Y. Just so I get it right for the minutes. I didn't know if you had a list started for next year, or if there's any cement or anything, what?
I see, there's a, there's a sidewalk list, I mean, they've, there were things, everything in the town, like the streets and that, get graded, graded, like it was A, B, C, D.
You go around checking sidewalks or something?
The state does the sound, the streets for us, didn't they?
The streets.
But we have walked around, and the guys have walked in, and we've noticed what's bad and what's not bad, and so it's, they try to get Jamie.
One of the problems is, it's Michigan Road, that's a state road, so there's no community crossings, it, it's not something the town's gonna pave, so.
I'm talking about your sidewalk.
Well, if we do that sidewalk, that'll have to be, well, when we do sidewalks through the community crossings, we do the roads and the sidewalks that are adjacent to them, so that's something we have to do.
Yeah, you did, you did, the road across from us got done, but.
Lurden Street.
Huh?
Lurden Road, yeah.
Yeah, that, that was a community crossings project.
But those are, those are town roads, Michigan Road is a state road.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. For the record, after the last time you were here, Jamie did go down the next day, cause he sent all his pictures of sidewalks, so I've still got them in here somewhere.
So it's probably gonna be a summer or two.
Well, unfortunately, it does take time, we got more sidewalks being done than we have man-hours to do with everything else we're doing, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I know.
I, I also want to point this out, not trying to, it is not our responsibility to do sidewalks, that is actually the homeowner's responsibility. We just try to do as many as we can.
Oh, I knew that was.
Yeah, it just is hard, I mean, we get to the ones where we can, and like you said, the state's doing a grant program, so when we do these streets, we're able to do some extra things like sidewalks, that's how we've done as many as we can. But normally, if they're bad enough, we try to get around, uh, cause I remember in your instance, you must have had a tree that was there that was taken down at some point.
Yeah.
Well, that, when they took that out, that's what pushed the sidewalk up.
Reece said that he cracked it, so, but it's just the whole thing, though.
Yeah.
Money mess.
Question. So if, if that's the case, now I've got sidewalk there in front of my house, can I have like Uncle Bob come over and pour that, break it out, pour it for me, and?
By ordinance, yeah, by ordinance, you can't, cause by ordinance, homeowners are responsible for the sidewalk.
For maintenance and.
I don't have an Uncle Bob, nobody's asking.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah, the town's just been very generous over the years to do it, but it's always been the homeowner's responsibility.
And the worst ones always come first, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem is, is the worst ones pop up faster than what you can fix them.
There's one on Broadway that's like that.
Well, the trees planted in the street don't help anything.
Yeah.
No.
And there's, there's new trees that people are planting all the time, too close to power line, too close to sidewalks, all that, and it, it's just a never-ending cycle.
Okay, anyone else? Public hearing for twenty twenty-three budget. This will be the first reading.
Yep, so we need to have a public hearing first.
Moved open public, back up.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-three budget. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Public hearing is now open.
So I gave you a sheet. I apologize, I didn't make a lot of them, but, um, I, I gave this to you with, along with the booklet that Baker Tilly, I did not have Baker Tilly come in this year, because we don't listen to them anyway, so, when we budget, so I wanted to let you know that, um, with the form ones that we did get together and have our budget workshops, this is the budget that we came up with, um, for all the departments. Um, the budget for this year, or for next year, I guess it doesn't have it on, on here, but, um, at the end of, at the beginning of, in January, we're estimated to have one point seven million in there. If we spend out our whole budget next year, then we will have one point six five eight, and that would be a deficit of eighty-six thousand dollars, roughly, over, that would be all of our cash rea-, um, we would dig into our cash reserves by eighty-six thousand, so we would overspend what we would get in for cash next, next year by eighty-six thousand dollars, roughly. So I will tell you, and George can probably back me up, or anybody that's been on the council for a few years. Uh, yeah, okay, whatever.
Sixteen years, I don't know.
Sixteen years. Um, this is probably the lowest number I've seen, um, as far as the eighty-six thousand. Normally it's in over a hundred thousand, if we were to spend everything. So the way that the town of Argus budgets is we kind of go for the gusto, and we try to, to put in every dollar that we bring in to be used. And sometimes we go a little over, um, because we do have some cash reserves, but we have never been totally over budget, except for.
One year.
I think last year.
Last year.
Last year.
Because of the stellar grants and everything else, we did go over budget, so.
And with that being said, the town is still debt-free.
Yes, and the town is still debt-free, so.
Yeah, you don't have any open bonds.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of throw that out there during the public hearing, so that everybody in the audience could hear, and it is just a rough estimate. Baker Tilly does a much better job at going over the numbers, but, um, I think that the sheet of paper kind of speaks for itself. So if you have any questions, now's the time to ask it. Eric, the audience has any questions, yes?
What it costs for most of the overage?
Um, we do a lot of community crossing, like Jamie said, so, um, some of that is we're spending out our MBH funds, you know, to do new roads, but if you've driven around Argus, we've got pretty good roads, and we've been really hammering on them. Jamie has applied for almost a million dollars every time.
Yeah, it's not totally that. So, so the way that we budget, I'm just gonna use these figures, our general fund, we budget five hundred thousand. We are notorious for only spending four hundred and fifty. We, we always budget that five hundred, and just to be safe, but we never spend that. So a lot of your overage is in here. Sorry, one time and. And that wasn't really one time, we actually knew that was gonna happen in that year, that's what we had.
But yet we saved.
But the one thing, if you remember when we started this, we were three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars difference, and we've got it down to, just from some changing in that, and she got some different revenue coming, so.
Yeah, and, you know, we do try to, um, we try to stay in our budgets every year, but we do have cash reserves for special projects like community crossings, and we also have, um, you know, like, we budget every year to spend so much money out of our rainy day fund, but we never spend it, because of the fact that, why spend it if you don't need it?
Yeah.
And so that's, that's in here. So that kind of says that we're going to spend it, and it depletes what is on there, but we are notorious for not spending it, so I, I would say that is your biggest, and of course, the fire territory is new, new to our budget for the second year, so this is the second year that they are, they get to approve their own budget, the Fire Territory Board approves it, and then we bring it in, and, um, it gets approved overall with our budget, but they, they are separate, they get to do their.
They are a separate tax entity, just as the park is.
Yep.
Hey, here's a couple of numbers for it, just to kind of answer, we're talking about eighty-six thousand dollars. The twelve, we had twelve thousand and sixty-six dollars, um, shown as a negative for next year on the park, and thirty-eight thousand nine oh five in the rainy day fund. And just keep in mind what she just said about the rainy day.
Right.
You got over half of the eighty-six thousand dollars right there in those two funds, and the way, the reason the park is that way is because we've done a lot of updates, and we're going into our first year, bringing in a lot of updates out there and bringing up this town. So we allotted a little extra, cause we don't know what we're gonna get into there. We don't expect to spend all of it, but we did give it a little extra there. So there's over half of it, and like everybody else has said, I've been on this council for almost five years now, and other than last year, we have never spent our whole budget.
Our entire budget.
Yeah, never. We've always been able to come out on our positive side, so, and that's the way we like to keep it, trust me, and they all know that I insist.
So, uh, overall, it doesn't look bad, does anybody else have any questions, or do you have another question?
Move for the close of public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any further comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 Both. Waiting on you, buddy.
Make the motion, no you.
Me?
I'm gonna have a motion for the first reading.
Oh, well.
No, you wanna do.
That's further down.
I thought you'd do a attorney report.
Oh, this is just a public hearing?
They just filed a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, attorney report.
What'd I do?
But they voted.
No, no, no.
No, wait.
Hang on, you gotta vote to close the hearing, so.
We did, we did.
Today?
I said it.
Oh, okay.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
We both missed it down here, so it's a bit very quiet.
We missed a lot of things.
So excited to tell you about the attorney stuff.
Let's do it.
All right, I'll try to do my best, um, but I do have a fair amount of topics here. First, I need to still get with Chuck DeWitt on three oh four East Plum and two twenty North Yerick, it's on me, um, but I know those were properties we talked about at the last meeting, I still need to get with him. I want to let you know that the D's that we had resolutions for at the last meeting for the Deer, Deerfield Meadows and the Downtown Square, those have all been approved, recorded, um, and so at the end of the day, Deerfield, all those lots are owned by redevelopment, Downtown Square is now totally owned by the Park Departments, okay? The other thing I wanted to bring up was we have a rezoning issue out of Deerfield Meadows, um, that is something that was put in front of the Plan Commission, and they had a meeting last evening, and I understand that they did pass a resolution to recommend a rezoning, and nothing for you to do tonight, just bringing you, uh, up to speed here. At the next meeting, we will have an ordinance to approve a rezoning. All of those lots are currently zoned heavy industrial, and they need to be zoned R2, basically, have houses put on. Um, the work at the Plan Commission's been done, we will have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then after that, then we'll have an ordinance, and again, if you got any questions, fine, but it's pretty, we've kind of gotta do it. Um, just letting you know that's common, okay? The other issue is, it was actually supposed to be at the last meeting that we had at the end of August, we were gonna talk about chickens, animals, and how our ordinances look, one way or the other. We're gonna have a, a public workshop, I think they got preempted by a executive session, so I'm just keeping that on everybody's radar, is that something that we want to have a workshop on at the next meeting, or the meeting after that, or where does that, where does that go? I don't want it to fall through the cracks. I know I sent an email back on July the seventh, I know we've had some folks from the town come in and talk about that, um, but we do have some things that we might want to take a look at.
We have a public workshop that is scheduled for the twenty-first at six thirty. It's up to you whether you wanna, I mean, I have pushed him out twice, I'm sorry, Derek.
And that's okay, I just, I just don't want it to fall through the cracks, and I.
I agree, it's time to.
Make a grand decision.
We've, uh, kind of overruled it, cause other things came up, and, uh, it's not, just because of necessity, not because we were trying to be up there, Derek.
Not understand? No, it's, it's, believe me, I'm, I just think it's one of those things, it's like, all right, we do need to kind of look at what we have and.
I agree. I, I'm okay with that, everybody else has.
Let's do it.
Okay. So, when are we doing it, what time?
September twenty-fourth at six thirty.
I'm gonna take a, huh?
Oh, at six, I'm sorry, six, the workshop is for six, I apologize.
And again, there was an email that I sent on July seventh, it had a lot of the town code, the zoning ordinance, so it'd be good to kind of review that, take a look at that, know a little bit about it when we come in, so we're not starting from scratch. I also wanted to talk to you about a railroad closing on West Street, and Jamie and I have been working on this with Norfolk Southern.
I haven't heard anything back.
Well, and that's okay, I don't, I don't know exactly what you folks know, but there's basically a push to close that, uh, intersection, that grade crossing is what they call it. We got some kind of a resolution from them, and it was kind of messed up, so I put together an agreement, um, for them to sign, so that both parties would be obligated to do what the agreement said to do. Um, I sent that to Jamie, he sent it to them, it's been two, three weeks ago, I think it was.
Two weeks.
And he, he's saying, Jamie's saying, he's not heard back from them. It's basically a situation that we need them to look at the agreement, so long as they're in agreement with the way it's drafted now, they need to sign that, get it back to us, then that triggers us to say, yes, we have a resolution that adopts the agreement, closes the grade crossing, and then moves things forward. It does amount to a payment to the town, um, and it also talks about some improvements on other crossings at Linden and.
Kenworth.
Ken, Kenworth. So, it's something I think maybe you're aware of, I know Jamie is, I've talked to him quite a few times about it, but it's kind of, and the ball's in their court, in other words, to get it back to us, but I just wanted to keep you up to speed that we're, we're on it, we're just kind of waiting to hear from them. There's also an issue, we need to have a public hearing, I don't know that we do, but they deal with this a lot more than I do, um, I don't see any requirement that we have to have a public hearing to close that grade crossing, but we'll listen to what they have to say, okay? The last thing I have is the Beers' property. At the last meeting, um, and actually, I'm gonna go back, I think it was on the meeting, we had it on August the third, uh, the, I'll even back up. In May, we sent a letter to the Beers saying that issues, uh, were present concerning the roof and other structural issues for the house, and it fell under the unsafe building ordinance. They addressed that, they've taken care of that. As the summer progressed, other things came to light, but it was really, it's nothing to do with their building, it was more about vegetation, uh, trees, shrubs, grass, et cetera, which is a totally different ballgame, but we worked with, they had an attorney that they were kind of talking to and helping, uh, represent them. I talked to him and explained, thanks for the work on the roof, but there's also issues with the grass, et cetera, and then at the meeting, and my notes show it was actually on August the third, that we tabled it, um, to have the town take a look at that. And I don't know where that's at, but again, I'm just, one of these things, I don't want to let it fall through the cracks, but we're opening a different can of worms, talking about vegetation, trees, brush, et cetera.
At our last meeting, Derek, I, I did inform the council, uh, I'm sure you were here, that I did visit that property with Cory, and we looked at it, we took pictures, and at that time, it had looked like they had done some stuff with some vegetation, and I think we had kind of, uh, left it. At that meeting, my understanding was, is that Chuck and Cory or something, they were gonna go in and tell you, and, and point out a few other things to them, see if they were gonna do that before we invoked any more money, or, you know, to do something that we may not have to do. That was what the gist of it was from the meeting prior to this one, and I'm sure that's probably on the tape.
But maybe I have four notes, so it sounds to me like we're just gonna leave this alone unless or until somebody brings us back to the fourth one.
You should have pictures that I sent you on or about before the last meeting.
I got August sixteenth pictures.
Yeah, that's, that's before.
And you're right, you're right, Sean, that would have been, and so, yeah. Okay, so I'll shut up, I'll close that.
No, it's fine, I just, I, I knew that we had briefly discussed it at the last meeting, I updated everybody on it.
Okay, so we'll leave that alone, and that was, yeah, all I had to report.
We have a motion and a second to accept attorney report. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Appointment of Adam Frekoff to the Plan Commission. This will be my appointment as the president of Town Council. I'm allowed one.
No, you're allowed one on one, but this is.
One tonight, you get one.
Lindsay. So, Lindsay Shively was your last appointment, and she ended up resigning from the Plan Commission. And so I went over it with Derek. I was supposed to do this, uh, a meeting ago. And, um, so he has come to the last couple, not, I mean, and, um, so if you could, I did swear him in. Um, September 1st.
September 1st, yes.
I did swear him in on September 1st, but then Derek told me to make it official in the meeting, so please make it official.
And retroactive to.
Retroactive to December, to, uh, September 1st.
Yep. That's it.
That's it?
Hey, I have a question.
Thank you, Adam.
And it's just because I don't know, and it's more for Derek than anybody. I believe Adam is an employee of the town, correct?
He is, yes.
There's no conflict in there, him holding a position within, on the town.
Nope.
It's not.
Okay, that's what I didn't know.
It's not paid.
Okay.
It's not paid.
Two lucrative offices is what you gotta avoid. So, an employee is typically an okay position to have. I'm not gonna go down this real far, but, um, you know, just your, your average employee that's out, uh, working alignment or something like that, he could be on redevelopment or something like that, because it's not an elected or appointed office.
And for the record, I have no problem with Adam serving in that capacity. I just didn't want to get us into a conflicting issue if there was one that may be there.
And that's what we kind of need to pay attention to.
I think that he would be fine holding that position.
That's why I always go to Derek first.
So, anyhow. So, we took care of the attorney report, we took care of the appointment. Old business. Is there anything need to be brought back up? Moving on. New business. Now we need to have the first reading on the ordinance 2022-11, the budget for 2023.
Making motion to pass ordinance 2022-11, the budget for 2023 on first reading only.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2022-11, budget for 2023 on first reading only. Any further comment? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passed.
Please just make sure that you're, we have a form for the next meeting so we can get it official.
Martin, did you get anything done on what we talked about last night?
No.
You didn't get no pickings, did you?
I got them, but no, we'll get them for the next. I'm gonna go back and get you started.
Was the water gone this morning? They were all on ice.
I think it's the timer working, so they should, after I leave, I'll make sure it's, so she'll automatically come off.
Was it moisturized out with them?
Not, there were still some. We'll have to go a couple days.
We're, we're discussing the, uh, zoning down there. Mark and John and I went down there last night. We turned the floodlights on, and they just really were good. They were impressive. And, uh.
She thought he was talking about something about flooding.
We've got the street lights, which will have to be turned, Dave. You were right.
Yeah, they'll get, they'll get it fixed.
But, uh, other than that, yeah, it's coming along. Mark's gonna have a slideshow for us. He took some pictures inside and out.
We just started, just started working with Kerry. We'll do a ribbon cutting here at some point. Probably try to get that done sooner rather than later because of weather.
Yeah.
I mean, in the next month and a half or so.
So, it's not quite all done, but it's getting closer. It's, things are getting, uh. We using a Friday?
No.
No.
Not ready for that yet.
Not ready for that yet. We'll be in, we'll be out in the streets one more time, but next year, look out. We're gonna bring elephants and everything in. All right, so it's March. I'll get out of here. Claims, arguing. We have claims we afford to declare. Please, she's not listening.
Because you have.
They're discussing.
Sidecar?
You say go to the bar.
Our claims are from August 16th till 9/6, and the total amount is $1,178,331.48. Any questions? And you'll notice that in there, we, we had some larger.
Yeah, I looked through there and saw that. I, I, how could we have so much, but there was.
Well, we, we had some of the final payments. Well, we're down to a few final payments on the Downtown Square, and then I think two of them were in this one.
Yeah.
And then, um, we had the roof on the EMS building. By the way, just to let you know, I took that out of the CCI fund, the cigarette tax fund. Um, some of it I took out of the general fund that's towards the maintenance of the, but because there wasn't enough, um, budgeted funds out of there, I took the rest of it out of CCI, which is normally what we do for capital projects.
So, that's pretty well, that's all taken care of.
That's all taken care of. The roof for the EMS building is totally paid for.
Now, all they got to do is to merge it from the other building company.
And they're working on that.
Yeah, I seen that.
But that's in the bid.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We had one little issue over there. Um, Cory's office had some water in the ceiling. I talked to B and B, they're gonna take care of it, so when, when they had the roof tore off, there was some shingles on there. They thought that'd be good enough, and they papered it. Well, when they had that storm, it blew it off, so, but.
Only temporary.
Yeah, they'll take care of it, so. I told Cory, it'll probably take some time, but it's not leaking or anything. It's just, it looks bad, so.
Yeah. So, you didn't have to take any funds out of utilities ring to help offset that EMS building? You took all that out of the?
So, there was, um, if you want the breakdown.
No, it's fine. I know it was.
Okay, so, there, there was, um, there was some money in the EMS budgeted line item that we always have, and I figured since it's September, hopefully we don't have a whole lot that happens at the EMS building in the next few months, so I did deplete that. But I left a little bit in there just to cover minor expenses, and then I took the rest out of the cigarette tax fund.
That's great.
So.
Keeps.
I make a motion to.
That's, maybe we don't have to take it all on Jamie.
So, we have a vote?
Yeah, no, I, you know.
I make a motion to accept the claims from August 16th to September 6th.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept claims from August 16th to September 6th. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.